The session is now called to order. Everybody is requested to rise for the singing of the Philippine National Anthem. Please remain standing for a minute of silent prayer. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move that we call the roll of members.
Is there any objection? The Chair here is none. The motion is approved. The Secretary is directed to call the roll of members.
Roll call of members, Honorable Representatives Abaya, Abayon, Abeljanosa, Abu, Abueg, Asharon, Aco, Acosta, Acosta Alba, Adyong, Advincula, Agarau, Agabau, Aglipay Bilyar, Albano, Alcala, Alejano, Almario, Almonte, Alonte, Alvarez Franz, Alvarez Mercedes, Alvarez Pantaleón, Amante, Amatong, Andaya, Angara Castillo, Antonino, Antonio, Aquinumag Say-Sai, Aragonés, Arbizon, Arcillas, Arenas, Atienza, Aumentado, Bagau, Bagatzing, Bagilat, Banal, Barbers, Barsaga, Batawil, Batokabe, Batista Bandigan, Belaro, Belmonte Calixano, Belmonte Jose Christopher, Valmento Ricardo, Benitez, Bernos, Bertis, Biazon, Biliones, Birón, Bolilia, Bondok, Bordado, Bravo Anthony, Bravo Maria Vida, Rosas, Bulut Bektang, Cagas, Kalalang, Calderón, Alex Sorbiano, Caminero, Campos, Canama, Kari, Casila, Castelo, Castro Franz, Castro Fred, Katamco, Cayetano, Celeste, Serapica, Ceriles, Chávez, Chipeco, Jo, Jo Wanko, Co Yantes, Cortés, Cortuna, Cosalan, Visólogo, Juá, Juarezma, Cueva, Dalipe, Datol, Daza, De Jesús, De Venecia, De Vera, De Pensor, Del Mar, Del Rosario, De Los Montalia, De Ma Pro Abdullah, De Ma Pro Mohammed, Duabet, Durano, Di, Elago, Enverga, Erise, Erigel, Hermita Buahain, Escudero, Espina, Espino, Estrelia, Josebio, Ebardoni, Fariñas, Fernando, Ferrer Juliet, Ferrer Luis, Feriol, Florendo, Flores, Fortún, Fortuno, Fente Belia, Garbin, García Guendolin, García José Enrique, García Albano, Garin Oscar, Garin Sharon, Gasataya, Gertalian, Heron, Go Anna Cristina, Go Mark, Gomez, Gonzaga, González Alexandria, González Aurelio Dong, González Fernando, Go Receta, Gulyas, Hernández, Herrera Di, Hopper, Halos Jos, Javier, Ko, Ong Hun, Labad Labad, Laxson, Lagman, Lanete, Laogan, Lazatin, Yachon, Lee, Lim Kai Chong, Lobregat, López Benhar, López Carlo, López Manuel, Loyola, Macapagalaroyo, Maceda, Madrona, Malapitan, Manalo, Mangawang, Mangodadatos Ojarto, Mangodadatos Ajit, Marcoleta, Marcos, Mariño, Marquez, Martínez, Matugas, Miliana, Mending, Mendoza, Mercado, Mirasol, Montoro, Naba, Nieto, Noel, Nograles Jerico, Nograles Carlo, Nolasco, Núñez Malañaon, Oaminal, Ocampo, Olivares, Ong Edwin, Ong Henry, Ortega Pablo, Ortega Vininola, Paqueau, Paduano, Palma, Pancho, Anganiban, Panotes, Papandayan, Pichai, Pimentel, Pineda, Plaza, Premisiya Sagabas, Kimbo, Radaza, Ramiresato, Ramos, Relámpagos, Rebilia, Roapuno, Robes, Locamora, Rodríguez Isidro, Rodríguez Maximo, Roman, Romero, Romualdes, Romualdo, Roque, Sacdalan, Sagarbaria, Sahali, Salceda, Salimbangan, Salo, Salon, Sambar, Sankopan, Sandoval, Santos Recto, Sarmiento César, Sarmiento Edgar Mary, Sabelliano, Semah, Xiao, Silverio, Xing Son, Swan Xing Estrelita, Swan Xing Horacio, Suárez, Si Alvarado, Tambuntin, Tan Angelina, Tan Milagrosa, Tan Xerni, Tejada, Tebes, Tianco, In, Tinio, Tolentino, Treñas, Tugna, Tupas, Ti, Omali, Unabia, Ungab, Uniko, Uy Juliet, Uy Rolando, Uy Bareta, Vargas, Vargas Alfonso, Belarde, Velasco, Velasco Catera, Veloso, Vergara, Villapuerte, Villanueva, Villarrasa Suárez, Villarica, Villarin, Violago, Yap Arthur, Yap Melicio, Yap Victor, Yu, Samora Maria Carmen, Samora Ronaldo, Zaráte, Subir.
Madam Speaker, the roll call shows that 229 members responded to the call.
With 229 members responding to the call, the Chair declares the presence of a quorum. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move that we defer the approval of yesterday's journal.
Is there any objection? The Chair here is none. The motion is approved. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move that we proceed with the reference of business and instruct the Secretary General to read the titles of the bills on first reading. So move, Madam Speaker.
Is there any objection? The Chair here is none. Motion is approved. The Secretary General is directed to read the titles of the bills and resolutions on first reading for proper referral to the appropriate committees.
Reference of Business: Bills on First Reading. House Bill 6925 Promoting Responsible Driving and Establishing Fair Accountability for Road Safety Incidents. Representative Abayon.
To the Committee on Transportation.
House Bill Number 6926-6933 Converting Certain Roads into National Roads. Representatives Villapuerte, Alvarez, and Lim Kai Chong.
To the Committee on Public Works and Highways.
House Bill 6931 Establishing a Branch of PUP in Caloocan City North. Representative Malapitan.
To the Committee on Higher and Technical Education.
House Bill 6934 Instituting a Philippine National Autism Care Plan. Representative Billarin.
To the Committee on Health.
House Bill 6935 Creating the Monthly Ride Subsidy Program. Representative Romero.
To the Committee on Poverty alleviation.
House Bill 6936 Creating a Mandatory Cash Transfer Program. Representative Romero.
To the Committee on Poverty alleviation.
House Bill 6937 Expanding the Coverage of the Senior Citizens Pension Program. Representative Olivares.
To the Committee on Population and Family Relations.
House Bill 6939 Amending Section 42, Batas Pampasabilang 129 as amended. Representative Rodríguez Maximo.
To the Committee on Justice.
House Bill 6940 Rationalizing the Proceedings in in and Resolution of Electoral Protest. Representative Rodríguez Maximo.
To the Committee on Suffrage and Electoral Reforms.
House Bill 6941 Instituting a National Bakery Industry Policy. Representative Rodríguez Maximo.
To the Committee on Trade and Industry.
House Bill 6942 Providing for the Administrative and Summary Titling of Real Properties. Representative Rodríguez Maximo.
To the Committee on Justice.
House Bill 6943 Penalizing Disobedience. Representative Rodríguez Maximo.
To the Committee on Justice.
House Bill 6944 Creating and Establishing the Institute for Strategic Studies. Representative Rodríguez Maximo.
To the Committee on National Defense and Security.
House Bill 6945 Converting the National Education Testing and Research Center into a National Education Assessment and Evaluation Authority. Representative Rodríguez Maximo.
To the Committee on Basic Education and Culture.
House Bill 6946 Promoting Rural Health. Representative Rodríguez Maximo.
To the Committee on Health.
House Bill 6947 Qualifying the Killing of Members of Broadcast and Print Media in the Local Exercise of Their Function. Representative Rodríguez Maximo.
To the Committee on Justice.
House Bill 6948 Reorganizing and Modernizing the NBI. Representative Rodríguez Maximo.
To the Committee on Justice.
House Bill 6949 Providing Telecommunication Systems Accessibility to Hearing Impaired. Representative Maximo Rodríguez.
To the Committee on Information and Communications Technology.
House Bill 6950 Protecting Children and Other Vulnerable Subpopulations. Representative Rodríguez Maximo.
To the Committee on Health.
House Bill 6951 Requiring Local Governments to earmark a portion of their era for free medicines. Representative Maximo Rodríguez.
To the Committee on Local Government.
House Bill 6952 Providing for Aviation Noise Management and Reduction in Residential Aspers. Representative Maximo Rodríguez.
To the Committee on Transportation.
House Bill 6953 Renewing the Franchise Credit to Raja Broadcasting Network. Representative Macapagalaroyo.
To the Committee on Legislative Franchises.
House Bill 6954 Creating a Progressive Vibrant and Viable Muriga-Olefera Industries. Representative Macapagalaroyo.
To the Committee on Agriculture and Food.
House Bill 6955 Promoting Positive and Nonviolent Discipline. Representative Silverio.
To the Committee on Welfare of Children.
House Bill 6956 Creating Barangay Tagukon. Representative Mercedes Alvarez.
To the Committee on Local Government.
House Bill 6957 Authorizing the City or Municipal Civil Register of the Council General to Update in the Civil Register the Civil Status of a Filipino Spouse who was Validly Divorced by a Foreign Spouse. Representative Acosta Alba.
To the Committee on Justice.
House Bill 6958 Providing for the Utilization of Idle Lands to Enhance Food Security. Representative Si Alvarado.
To the Committee on Natural Resources.
House Bill 6959 Restructuring the PNR System. Representative Si Alvarado.
To the Committee on Government Enterprises and Privatization and the Committee on Transportation.
House Bill 6960 Promoting the Use of Renewable Energy. Representative García José.
To the Committee on Energy.
House Bill 6961 Mandating Enhanced Protection for Consumers. Representative Castelo.
To the Committee on Trade and Industry.
House Bill 6962 Mandating Barangay Officials as Civil Servants. Representative Castelo.
To the Committee on Appropriations.
House Bill 6963 Defining Hate Speech and Providing Penalties Therefore. Representatives Macap Mendinga and Sankopan.
To the Committee on Human Rights.
House Bill 6964 Redefining the Role of Local Universities and Colleges. Representative Belaro.
To the Committee on Higher and Technical Education.
House Bill 6965 Rationalizing the Course offerings of higher education in the country. Representative Belaro.
To the Committee on Higher and Technical Education.
House Bill 6966 Supporting the Production of Philippine Independent Films. Representative Bravo Anthony.
To the Committee on Public Information.
House Bill 6967 Establishing a Cultural Center in Every Administrative Region in the Country. Representative Escudero.
To the Committee on Basic Education and Culture.
House Bill 6968 Relocating the Seat of Government from Metro Manila to Davao City. Representatives Salo and Kalalang.
To the Committee on Revision of Laws.
House Bill 6969 Mandating the PHIC to Increase the Hemiodialysis Treatment Coverage. Representative Soffer.
To the Committee on Health.
House Bill 6970 Providing Incentives for New Graduates of Colleges, Universities, and Accredited Institutions. Representatives Soffer and Escudero.
To the Committee on Higher and Technical Education.
House Bill 6972 Setting a Fixed Single Term Limit to the Term of Office of the Chairman and Commissioners. Representative Herrera Di.
To the Committee on Higher and Technical Education.
Resolution. House Solution 1579 Direct the Committee on Good Government and Public Accountability to Investigate the Regularities of PCSO. Representative Pangariban.
To the Committee on Rules.
House Bill 1580 Urging the Proper Committees of the House to Investigate the Operations of the DBP and the LBP. Representative Romero.
To the Committee on Rules.
House Solution 1581 Expressing profound sympathy and sincere condolences of the Congress of the Philippines on the death of former Supreme Court Justice Justo Torres Jr.
To the Committee on Rules.
Committee Report. Report Number 571. House Bill Number 6971.
To the Committee on Rules.
Report Number 572. House Bill Number 6973.
To the Committee on Rules.
Report Number 573. House Bill Number 6974.
To the Committee on Rules. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move that we take up unfinished business.
Is there any objection? The Chair here is none. The motion is approved.
Madam Speaker, I move that we take up House Bill 6772 and may we direct the Secretary General to read the title of the bill. So move, Madam Speaker.
Is there any objection? The Chair here is none. The motion is approved. Secretary General is directed to read the title of the bill.
House Bill Number 6772 Act Ensuring the Preservation and Management of Protected Areas Amending for the Purpose Republic Act Number 7586 Otherwise known as the National Integrated Protected Area System as Act of 1992.
Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, our parliamentary status is we are in the period of sponsorship and debate. May we recognize the Chairman of the Committee on Natural Resources, the Honorable Arnold T. of Partilis-LPGMA to sponsor the bill. Madam Speaker, I move that we recognize the Honorable... or, uh... Madam Speaker, I move that we recognize the Honorable Lito Atienza of Partilis-Buhay for his interpolation. So move, Madam Speaker.
Is there any objection? The Chair here is none. Motion is approved. The Honorable Lito Atienza is recognized.
Madam Speaker.
It is the pleasure of the Honorable T.
Also, we want to wish to recognize one of the author, Representative Ramirez Sato, to also defend the bill. House Bill 6772. Likewise, Madam Speaker, we move to recognize the Honorable Sato.
Is there any objection? The Chair here is none. The motion is approved. The Honorable Josephine Sato is recognized.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker.
Shall we hear from the Honorable Lito Atienza?
Yes, Madam Speaker. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Majority Leader. With the kind indulgence of the principal author and all the authors of the measure, this representation would like to clarify certain issues that may be spelling in the near future the success of the good intentions of this measure or failure as Republic Act 7586 has suffered. At present, it is really a problem of our declared areas, landscapes, seascape, and other areas that should be protected as defined by law. So, I would like to thank our Congresswoman from Honduras for her initiative and together with all the members who have signed this measure, and I see a lot of them, probably more than 60 sponsors of the measure, signifying the very significance, the very importance of this measure, which, paraphrasing the sponsorship yesterday, said it is something that has long been awaiting action and our natural beauty meanwhile is being destroyed and we are losing out on the benefits of a beautiful country like the Philippine Islands. So, I would only ask a few questions in support of our measure. I believe that this is necessary, this is the best thing. But we need to learn from our failures. Our failures are Republic Act 7586, the old law governing the management of our declared areas, of protected areas in the country. My first question is, do you believe that they will stop our protected areas in the country?
Before I answer the question, Madam Speaker, I would just want to declare here that this representation believes in the wisdom and experience of the Honorable Atienza when it comes to environment and environmental protection. So, what I'm asking is, in the context of this ban, if it will stop or help the protection of our protected areas and the newly declared national parks? So, we have to amend the ban for our National Integrated Protected Area System of 1992 because there are some deficiencies in the ban. So, we have to say that we have adopted a number of prohibited acts and these prohibited acts are affecting the people or not only fines, but we have imposed on imprisonment ranging from 1 year to about 6 years and for some special prohibited acts, the penalty ranges not only from 1 year to 6 months to 6 years, but we raise it from 6 years to 12 years. And in addition to that, if the culprit or the accused or the violator is a public official or an elected public official or an officer of the law, then there is an accessory penalty of perpetual disqualification from office.
Madam Speaker, I would like to thank them for their contribution. Their representation has flourished since this year as a member of our community. In protecting our natural wealth, we did our best. And one of such admission that we can make at this point is that our protected areas have not been protected enough in the past. This is what I saw firsthand. This is what has frustrated me no end and has also worried me that if something is not done, the beauty and the wealth of the Filipino people, which is our environment, our culture, will be lost. There is no use for declaring an area a protected area or a protected seascape or protected landscape if this is not given a clear protection. And I have to admit that this is a bad ban. It is true. There are penalties to be imposed. And that is correct. We should really be punishing more and we should be dismissing out heavier penalties to those who will violate. My opinion is one of the most important issues. Who is the one who is going to fight for this bad ban?
In accordance with Section 7 of the Expanded National Integrated Protected Area System, the NIPAS is placed under the control and administration of the Department of Natural Resources.
The DNR therefore shall be again made responsible, accountable, and punishable if they fail to implement the law. Am I correct to assume that?
Yes, the direct control and supervision and administration of the implementation of this law is placed on the shoulders of the DNR. But however, Madam Speaker and Honorable Atienza, there is a special provision that is Section 26 of the bill which states that the LGU within the protected area shall participate in its management through representation in the Protected Area Management Board. And with this law, we also expanded membership of the Pambi so that the protection efforts shall be participatory and transparent in nature.
I have before me Section 26 as read, explained by the author. And she is correct to say that the LGUs are mentioned to be a part of the management of the area. But I don't know about accountability of LGUs where there are protected areas for them to supervise. Because responsibility and authority without accountability is nothing but a power to even abuse in the event that violations are committed. Where there are authorities and responsibilities, there should be an equal principle of accountability so that if and when the area is allowed to be abused and deteriorates under the management of the Pambi. The Pambi is the Protected Area Management Board where the LGU is properly a member of. If there is no accountability, there will not be any damage to this protection. Because right now, I'm sure the author will admit that the protected areas in the country numbering about...
The one that has been legislated covers 13 protected areas plus 94 under this bill. Because even before the passage of the regional NIPAS law, there were 113 protected areas declared and proclaimed by presidential orders and presidential proclamations. But the Constitution requires that after the proclamation and delineation of national parks and protected areas, it has to be covered by a congressional act. So that 13 plus 94 that will be the protected areas as declared and legislated by Congress.
In your studies, I'm sure you studied the whole problem quite broadly because there are a lot of details here that will happen today. I would like to talk about it. In your studies, where there are clear violations of the character of... of the character of a protected area and the value of such area is lost from the Filipino people. Sino po ba ang primarily sa tingin ninyo ang nagkukulang at nakakasala sapagkat hindi nasusunod ang batas? So in your own perception and as a result of your studies, sino po ba ang pwede natin sabihing nagkulang, therefore dapat managot?
Um, 'yung una po, bago ko po sagutin 'yan, meron pong naunang tanong ang kagalang-galang na Atsensya na sinasabi na 'yung responsibilidad at accountability ng local government ay hindi po masyadong klaro o hindi po nagkakaroon dito sa batas na ito. So ang akin pong sasabihin dyan, the local government units will be represented in the PAMB. The governor, the mayor, the barangay captains, even the district representatives and even the senators will be represented in the PAMB. And in the provision of the powers and functions of PAMB, it is specifically stated that the local government executives or the local government units who represent their local government units in the Protected Areas Management Board is obligated and is mandated to make sure that all the policies will be transmitted or reported back to his constituency and that he will make sure that local government units shall include in the management plan comprehensive land use plans of the LGU, local development plans, disaster risk reduction management plans, and other required plans according to the objectives specified in the management plans for the protected areas. And failure, failure for these local government executives to perform all the functions enumerated, all the powers and functions enumerated in this law or in this bill will be subjected to administrative charges and if he will be proven to have been remiss in his functions and if he violates the provisions or the prohibited acts provided for in this bill in addition, in addition to the imprisonment and/or fine, there is an accessory penalty of perpetual disqualification from holding public office.
Kaibay, kasangayon na ang ating yaman ng bansa ay nakasalala dito sa mga areas na ating pinag-uusapan at bibigyan natin ang proteksyon. Kasangayon po ako 'yun.
Ako po ay sumasangayon and I share your determination and your perseverance so that we will see the day that all our protected areas will really be conserved and preserved as a patrimony of our nation that will be turned over to the future generation. That is the reason why we are pushing hard for the approval of this bill.
At kayo'y sumasangayon din na sa lahat ng ahensya na maaaring makagawa ng malaking hakbang sa pagtatanggol ng ating kalikasan at ng ating yaman sa lupa at kargatan ay ang mga local government units. Do you agree with that?
Naniniwala po ako dahil ako po ay dating gobernador ng aming lalawigan at naniniwala din po ako na mga frontliners sa mga local government units sa pagmamahal at pagtatanggol sa ating kalikasan. Ngunit meron pong mga batas na dapat tayong sundin at ang mandate po ng Department of Environment and Natural Resources at 'yan po ay babasahin ko that DNR is mandated to be the primary government agency responsible for the conservation, management, development, and proper use of the country's environment and natural resources. Kung ililipat po natin ang primary responsibilities sa local government units, we are usurping the mandate of the DNR. Hindi naman po natin ibig sabihin na kung hindi ang primary responsible agency sa paglaban sa pagkasisira ng ating kalikasan ay ang hindi ang local government hindi po nangangahulugan na hindi malapit sa puso at hindi ipaglalaban ng local government 'yan. Kami po sa local government units ay talagang kami po ang frontliners. Kami po ang unang masisi si kung masisira po ang kalikasan sa aming mga sariling probinsya at munisipyo. But we have to respect the law that the primary government agency mandated by law for the conservation, management, and development and proper use of our country's environment and natural resources has been vested upon the Department of Environment and Natural Resources.
The lady is accurate in her appreciation of the functions of the DNR. On the other hand, she may have to be reminded that the principle of local autonomy enshrined in our constitution mandates that all LGUs are given all the power more than the DNR, more than any other department, more than the public works, more than any other national office. The local government unit is empowered to plan their development, to push for their development, to protect their surroundings, and to take care of their territorial limits because they are precisely in the best position to do so. 'Yun po 'yung principional local autonomy.
Naniniwala po.
Kaya pag sinabi po ng gobernador, hindi pwede 'yung project na 'yan, hindi pwede. Mas sinapa sabihin ng DNR, pwede 'yan, hindi matutuloy 'yan. Pag sinabi ng Department of Public Works, matatayo kami rito ng tulay. Sinabi ng gobernador, hindi pwede po sapagkat protected area 'yan. Hindi matutuloy 'yung proyektong 'yun. So, my question is very simple and clear. Would you agree that pinpointing of responsibility this time is necessary? If we are to expect any results from this well-studied piece of legislation, lagyan natin ng enforcement responsibility. Hindi pwedeng DNR because DNR is under the principle of the power of local autonomy with regards the local government unit. Kaibay pa pa'yan, kung gagawin natin ang local government units from governor down to the barangay level would be the ones to be made accountable in enforcing the law?
Uh, wala po namang magiging problema kung magko-complement po 'yung responsibility ng DNR at ng local government units. My point here only is, 'yung pong sinasabi natin na may local autonomy, isa po sa hindi ang total na pagbababa ng buong karapatan sa proteksyon ng ating natural resources and environment. Ayun pong, 'yun nga pong tungkol sa environment, hindi po full ang pagbibigay ng autonomiya ng batas sa local government units. Katulad din po ng mga ibang functions ng national government na hindi po total na ibinigay sa local government unit. Pero naniniwala po ako at sumasangayon ako sa sinasabi ninyo that there should also be a mandate on the part of the local government to complement the responsibility and powers of the DNR. It should be a strong complementation of duties and functions between the DNR and the local government unit. But as I've said po, we will be usurping the functions of the DNR as mandated by the law if we will transfer the primary responsibility to the local government unit. Ang aming lang po ay maging compliment at mas maging malaki ang bahagi ng local government sa pagpaprotec- sa pagprotect at pagdi-defend ng integrity ng ating environment and natural resources. At pero kami po naman ay bukas kung ano po ang i-sasuggest na amendment ng atin pong ginagalang na dating sekretaryo ng Environment and Natural Resources. As I've said at the onset, I believe in the wisdom and the experience of the Honorable Gentleman from Buhy Party List.
Binanggit ng ating kagalang-galang na Congresswoman na tinatanggap niya na ang LGUs ay merong mandato. Mandate, that's precisely my point. They have the mandate, they should be given the accountability of protecting the area which we are declaring. Then otherwise, we're wasting again precious effort and time and good intentions of those who co-sponsor this measure. Pag wala pong principle of accountability doon sa lokal, hindi po 'yung national office. Dahil nakita ko po 'yan. Even if I wanted to correct what I was seeing on the ground, I could not because the mayors and the governors are all part of the problem. Pagka ganun po nangyari, this piece of paper will come to nothing once again. Ang iinayang po ako. Kayo'y well-intentioned, pag tutulungan nating ipasaitong batas na ito, tiyakin natin, ngayon hindi na pwedeng magturuan. May kasalanan dito 'yung red, hindi, may kasalanan dito si mayor. Pero ako nakita ko, point blank, I went to Batangas to protect a protected area, Lake Taal. I went to the governor, she was well-intentioned, in fact, she's one of us now. You can inquire from her. I presented to her the problem, tabi nga niya, talagang dumadami ang mga baklad dito. So nasisira, hindi ko po sinabing bakla, baklad. Baklad, ito po 'yung mga fish pen. Dumadami nga po rito, eh nasisira na 'yung karakter ng Taal Lake. Nagtatampu na roon 'yung mga tawilis. 'Yung maliputo ay nawala na po, polluted na ang Lake Taal. Noong kami po'y nag-iimbesiga at hiningi ko kay Governor Bill Masantos, tumulong siya, which he readily gave, she immediately acted. Siya po'y umaksyon at siya'y nangako na lilinisin niya ang Taal Lake ng mga baklad na ito. Eh hindi ko po naman siya masisi sapagkat binalig-balikan ko 'yan, hindi ko na siya inistorbo. Eh hindi po talaga na correct. Dumami pa po ang mga baklad dun, bakit? Eh mga mayors ang mayari. Tabi nga sa akin ng mga mayor, makisama ka na lang, sir. Baka namang kakandidato ka national. Kami dabahala sa eri, huwag na 'yung problemahin 'yan dahil hindi ako kakandidato national. At kung kumandidato man ako, hindi ko kailangan hingin ng tulong sa mga mayors na magiging san- na nagiging sanhi ng problema ng bansa. And I found out, mayors own those fish pens. And that's the reason why they were not being removed to the disappointment of the good governor, to frustrations of your representation. Because sila mayari, pagalis namin doon, oh, the happy days are here again, sabi nila. Wala na si Gob, wala si sekretary, o tuloy 'yan ligaya. So, my point is that if we are going to make this law a centerpiece of protecting our protected areas, let's make the accountability properly directed. Hindi po DNR ang talagang mananagot dyan, hindi po Superman. Ang mga nanunungulan sa department na 'yan, ang mayors, andun po sila araw-araw. Ang mayor nagbibigay ng permit doon sa mga activities na 'yan. Ang mayor ang nagbibigay ng proteksyon. Kaya lagay na natin dito sa batas. If there are any violations thereafter, huwag na natin gawing retroactive. Ayoko namang makulong 'yung mga nagkamali ng mayor dahil 'yung mga panahong 'yun ay hindi pa namang talaga istrikto ang batas. Pero ngayong ginagawa na natin istrikto ang batas, lagay na natin sa tunay na titik layunin ng inyong lingkod para po namang magkaroon ng bunga. The mayor should be primarily responsible if the protected seascape is being used as a garbage depository. If the waters of that protected area is not being protected, kasalanan po ng gobyerno lokal 'yan, panagotin din natin ang Department of Environment. Hindi po sinasabing iabsueltto 'yung DNR, hindi po. They may be equally accountable, but I would make the LGU primarily accountable because they are the ones who can do something about this. Si Presidente Duterte, binigyan tayo ng mensahe noong 2016 dito sa ating kongreso. 'Yung kanyang frustration sa Laguna de Bay, binanggit niya, sabi niya, ako'y sawang sawana, makita 'yung mga baklad sa Laguna de Bay, na sumisira ng tubig dyan. I'm giving them until December of 2016 to be removed. Nakita ko 'yung sekretary ng DNR, aba eh tatangu-tangu. At tinawag naman siya sa malakanyang pagkatapos dun, inorderan siya. Alisin mo la dyan. Ang tanong ko po ngayon, naalis po ba? Hindi po, dumami pa ang baklad sa Laguna de Bay. Manila Bay is another example. Manila Bay is a protected area, protected seascape, protected landscape, historically declared as a very important critical body of water in the country. Tinapon 'yun ngayon, ano ang kalagayan ng Manila Bay? At tinaponin 'yun ang nangyayari araw-araw. 'Yung mga baklad na nanggaling sa kabite, papunta na po ng paraniake. Darating ang araw, makatutuloy na tayo, papunta ng kabite sa pamamagitan ng mga baklad. All of this are violations. But who's being made to account for all of it? My point is that we would like to support your best intentions for the environment, but be realistic enough. At huwag na tayong mamulite ka. Harapin natin ang problema, ang mananagot dyan ayon sa ating saligang batas ay ang mga gobyerno lokal. Otherwise, there are seven thousand one hundred six islands the DNR cannot guard that.
Yeah, we appreciate and.
We have one thousand seven hundred municipalities the DNR cannot supervise that.
Yeah.
But every place that I mentioned has a mayor, has barangay chairman, has a governor. And all of them together will be the solution to the destruction of our environment.
We appreciate the concerns of the Honorable Gentleman. That's precisely the reason why we have delineated or we have clearly divided the functions and responsibilities of PAMB, the local government unit, and the DNR. We would like to assure the Honorable Gentleman that the local government will play a very important and crucial role in the implementation of this bill if it becomes a law and that the local government units shall take responsibility in the implementation and if they are the very problems or if they violate the provisions of this law, I again reiterate that they shall be charged administratively and criminally with an accessory penalty of perpetual disqualification from holding public office. The only thing that we would want to guard against, Madam Speaker, is that we cannot usurp the mandated role or power of the DNR and that the DNR, which is very supportive of the passage of this bill, cannot abdicate its mandate in this bill. So that as a conclusion, Madam Speaker, there will be a complementary or the functions of the DNR will be strongly complemented by the powers and functions of the local government unit through the PAMB in this bill. And I would like to assure the Honorable Gentleman that there is a noble provision in this bill that provides for a management plan that will be passed by both the DNR or participated in by the DNR, the local government units, and the NGOs. And that this management plan will be strictly. And that this management plan will be strictly enforced and followed. And again, there is a provision in this law providing for a joint congressional oversight committee to ensure the strict implementation and compliance of the provisions of this law. Again, we appreciate the concerns of the honorable gentleman. And we would like to consider his recommendations or proposed amendments to the measure.
Madam Speaker, with due respect to the lady, I take her assurances as direct answers to our question. But I would like to hear her say that she would accept an amendment where we will pinpoint responsibility that local government units officials shall be directly accountable if this law is not enforced. I'm not asking the lady to abdicate, to remove the mandate of the DNR. I'm not asking her to change the setup where we have a Department of Environment. What I'm asking her is to allow an amendment to this proposed law so that LGUs will be made to be directly accountable. I'd like to see some mayors go to jail criminally charged in allowing the destruction of our environment. Kasi ang pinag-uusapan natin dito, yaman ang ating bansa. Protected areas are the main centerpiece of the richness and wealth of our nation in natural resources and natural wealth. Pero meron po mga project na katulad po ng reclamation. Protected area, protected landscape, magkakaroon ng reclamation. Nabanggit po ba niyo 'yan dito sa ating panukalang batas? Right now, there is a reclamation craze sweeping the nation. Na pagka hindi napigil, ang kapuluhan ng ating bansa ay magbabago hugis. Sa dami ng reclamation projects that are now being pursued by the LGUs. Kaya ako sinasabing, ang LGU pinaka mahalagang ahensya rito. Sapagat sila talaga, ang may kapangyarihan na mag-implement ng anumang proyekto. 'Yung reclamation projects all over the country are all projects of the LGUs.
Wala po tayong, hindi pinagkakasunduan na ang local government unit will play a very critical role in the successful implementation of this bill. Ang hindi lang po namin masagot sa inyo ng diretso ay 'yung sasabihin dito sa batas na ang primary agency for the implementation of this bill or this law shall be the local government code at the local government unit because we will be violating several laws which clearly provides that the mandate of the DNR is being the primary government agency responsible for the conservation. We're not saying, Your Honor, that if we do not declare the local government as the primary unit or agency responsible for the implementation and success of this bill, eh hindi po natin bibigyan ng mabigat na katungulan ang ating local government units. Sinasabi ko nga po na nandyan po, naka-enumerate na ang mga dapat na responsibilidad ng local government unit. Meron pa pong kaparusahan, hindi lamang po fine, hindi lamang po presso 'yung sinasabi niyo na gusto niyong makakita ng gubernador o mayor na makulong. Kasama niyo po ako dyan, gusto ko rin makakita. Kaya po nandito sa batas na ito na hindi lamang fine, sila ay pwede pang ma-imprison from one year to six years or from six years to 12 years depending on the crimes that they have committed. And ang pinakang kinatakutan po ng mga elected officials ay 'yung magkaroon ng penalty or accessory penalty na perpetual disqualification from holding public office. So tayo po ay, kami po naman ay nakalagay na dito na 'yung obligasyon at responsibilidad ng local government unit ay complementary doon po sa ibinibigay ng batas na karapatan o kapangyarihan sa DNR.
Madam Speaker, I'm quite frustrated because although the lady accepts the fact and the points that we are raising, she still has not assured this body to accept our proposal that in this particular piece of legislation, ilagay na natin sa ayos, hindi katulad nun 7586, na walang nakulong na lumabag sa protected area efforts ng gobyerno. Ang DNR, huwag na niyong ipilit, hindi po kaya ang trabaho bantayan ang pitonlibong kapuluhan. At ang ating walongdaang kilo at sapa na binibigyan natin ng proteksyon. Ang gusto ko lamang marinig ay sumasang-ayon sila na lagyan natin ang criminal liability. Hindi po 'yung disqualification from office. Alam niyo kung bakit? Sapagat ngayon, ang mga gumagawa ng krimen, ang palaging naririnig natin, prove it! And I will resign from my office and I will never run. Hindi na paruse. Prove it! If you are proven guilty of violating the law, you go to jail.
And that's a function of the judicial branch of our government, Your Honor. And ngayon po, idinidiklara namin na kung ang isang, hindi lamang po ang local government executive, kundi kahit na sino pong tao na lumalabag sa provision ng batas na ito will be not only administratively liable, pero they will be criminally liable. At sinasabi ko nga pong paulit-ulit na sila, depende sa kanilang violation, ay makukulong ng isa hanggang anim na taon or anim na taon hanggang labing dalwang taon. So we will make it clear po, at nandyan namang po 'yan sa batas, that public officials who will violate the provisions of this law will not only be administratively liable, but criminally liable.
Hindi po ganun ang pagkakasulat. Ang nakalagay po rito, without prejudice to being criminally charged. What I'm asking for is a commitment to make it a criminal act to abuse the environment. Kung kayo'y papayag, magkakasundo na tayo. Kung hindi po kayo papayag, hindi po matatapos ang dibating ito.
Hindi po kami sinasabing hindi po pumapayag. Ang sinasabi ko lang po, it is very clear in the law that there is a criminal liability not only for public officials, but for any person who violates the prohibited acts or violates the provisions of this law. And I would like to assure you that the chairman and the other co-authors are now saying that because we believe in your wisdom and in your experience, then we will make sure that all the public officials elected or otherwise will suffer criminal liability in case they violated any provision of this law.
So kayo po ba'y tumatanggap? Na sa takdang panahon, mag-aamayenda po ang inyong lingkod, gagawin ko pong primarily criminally liable. Ang sinumang local official na napatunayang hindi nagtrabaho at hindi nagpatupad ng batas. Papayag po ba kayo roon?
Sige po, at pumapayag po kami dahil alam po nasa batasin po dem. Pero kami po ay tatanggap ng inyong gustong i-amanda dito po sa aming inihahain batas.
Well, with that assurance, Madam Speaker, I will insist on an amendment in due time to make this law clothed with enforceability. Otherwise, it will suffer the same fate of RA 7586. Maraming protected area, 113 of them, but none of them is really protected because in many of them, the principal violators are the local authorities in the area. I will cite to you Laguna de Bay, I will cite to you Manila Bay. Palagay ko, hindi na kayo makapag-didynay ng katotohanan. 'Yan pong mga, 'yan pong mga katubigan na 'yan, ay inabuso at hanggang ngayon inaabuso. Pati ang Pangulo ng bansa frustrated na. Sabi niya noong isang araw, at ako'y natutuwa, pakukulong niya lahat ng mga mayor dyan pag hindi inalis 'yung mga baklad. Pati si Pangulong Duterte, aminado niya, sino makakatulong sa kanyang magandang pangitain sa Pilipinas? Ang mga mayors and governors. Hindi po Congress, hindi po batas. Ang batas ay hindi pinatutupad, baliwala po 'yan. Ang batas na pananagutan ng sinuman na tinutukoy ng batas, 'yun ang magbibigay ng visa sa batas. Maraming salamat po. Thank you very much for your acceptance.
Madam Speaker, before we call on the next Interpolant, I move that we acknowledge the guests of the Honorable La Alpedo Albi Benitez. Joining us here in the gallery are Attorney Angelito Aguilera of FadC, Mr. Silcoobo of FadC, Attorney Sigfried Lapasarán of NHMFC, Attorney Maria Luis Apangan of HURB, Attorney Kristel Duque of HDMF Pagibig, Mr. Floydlan Campitán of NHA, Ms. Agnes Agay of NHA, Mr. Luis Bacamonte of NHA, Mr. Nico Mercader of NHA, and Mr. Tito Botardo of NHA.
Will the guests of the Honorable Albi Benitez please rise? To be recognized, welcome to the House of Representatives. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move that we recognize our next Interpolator, the Honorable Carlos Isaganes Arate of the Party List Bayan Muna. So move, Madam Speaker.
The Honorable Carlos Arate is recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Sa ating kagalang-galang na sponsor, pwede ho bang magtanong patungkol ho dito sa ating mga tinatalakay na panukalang batas? Maraming salamat po. Habang tayo po ay may magandang layunin para sagapin ang integridad ng ating kapaligiran, hindi ho natin maiikakaila na ang kalikasan at ang tao ay magkasama sa areaang sasakupin o magiging target nitong expanded naipas. Sa katunayan po, sa anghala ng pangangalaga ng kalikasan, hindi ho natin maiwasan na may panghihimasok sa karapatan. Halimbawa, ang mga katutubo sa kanilang lupang ninuno. At hindi lang sa kanilang lupang ninuno, kundi maging sa kanilang karapatan sa sariling pagpapasya ang panukalang batas na ito. At ito nga, gusto nating palawigin pa ang masasakop ng naipas. Madam Speaker, Madam Sponsor, sa esensya ho, sa pagtingin ng ilang mga katutubo na ating nakakausap at ilang mga advocates na makarapatan ng mga katutubo, sa tingin nila, noon pa man at hanggang ngayon, kuad ang programang proteksyon ng naipas, hindi nito tunay na napangalagaan ang ating kalikasan at ang kapaligiran. Lalong-lalo na para sa interes ng ating mahirap na mamamayan. At parang ang napangalagaan lang dito ay interes ng mga malaking kapitalista, lalong-lalo na doon sa usapin ng lupa at biodiversity. Central na mga usapin dito, halimbawa, Madam Speaker and Madam Sponsor, para sa mga usapin ng common na pagmamayari sa lupa at sa rekoso na nasa loob nito, sa buod ng sistema ang katutubo, ang usapin ng land use, for example, na ipinapatao ng gobyerno sa mga lupain ito sa isang forma na sa tingin nila ay pangangamcam. Nandyan rin ang usapin ng komersyalisasyon, ng kultura, lupain, at kahit na ang kalikasang pinangalagaan ng mga katutubo sa loob ng daang taon. At pangatlo, Madam Sponsor, Madam Speaker, sa tingin ng ating mga katutubo at ng mga advocates, hindi ang mamamayan ang pangunahing perino proteksyonan ng naipas or maging itong expanded naipas, kundi, quote-unquote, "Ang tinatawag na kalikasan na inihiwalay ang tao o ang mga katutubo sa kalikasan." Kaya ito ay may banta na mapalaya sila sa mga komunidad na daon-taon ang may tinatawag nating symbiotic na relation sa kapaligiran. Kaya sa tingin namin, mali ang pagtingin na ang mga taong gumagamit ng rekoso ng kagubatan at katubigan ang magiging dahilan ng pagkasira dito. Kaya sa punto pong ito, hayaan niyo pong maglinaw ako ng may ilang makatanungan patungkol dito sa ating binabalangkas na batas. Una po, Madam Sponsor, Madam Speaker, dito ho sa ating panukalang batas, pwede ho bang mailinaw natin? Ano ang mga provision na nagtitiyak na walang mga katutubo o mga upland settlers? Not necessarily mga katutubo, kahit na mga upland settlers o mga komunidad na magdudulot ng physical or economic displacement sa kanila? San ho ba rito 'yung mga provision na ito?
Napaka klaro po ng provision sa ating iniyahain na batas. Specifically, Section 11 states that as part of heritage preservation and pursuant to the need to conserve biologically significant areas, the territories and areas occupied and conserved for and by indigenous peoples and communities shall be recognized, respected, developed, and promoted. The ICCs and the IPs concerned shall have the responsibility. Ito po ay nirerecognize natin ang kanilang karapatan to govern, maintain, develop, protect, and conserve such areas in accordance with their indigenous knowledge systems and practices and customary law with full and effective assistance from NCIP, DNR, and other concerned government agencies. A mechanism for coordination and complementation between the indigenous traditional leadership and governance structures and the NCIP, DNR, government agencies concerned at LGUs and civil society organizations shall be created. Ang isa po pong provision ay kasama po ang ating IPs doon sa PAMB, na yun po ang magma-manage ng protected areas. At doon din po nakalagay sa ating section na inirerecognize po natin 'yung pre-existing rights noong mga ating mga, lalong-lalo na 'yung mga katutubo na nandun po sa loob ng ating protected areas. Lalong-lalo na po kung ang protected areas na 'yan ay nasa sakop din po ng ancestral domain ng ating mga katutubo. Ako po ay galing sa isang lalawigan na may mga katutubo din. Kaya kami po ay, at alam na alam ko po 'yan, at kasama po kami sa pakikipaglaban ng mga katutubo na kahit kailan man ay hindi po sila madisplace o mapapaalis sa kanilang mga lupain ninuno. Kami rin po, lalo na ang ibang local government units, ay kami rin po ang nagtumutulong sa ating mga katutubo na 'yung kanilang mga codpiece ay maibigay na po sa ating mga katutubo. So dito po sa batas na ito ay papangalagaan po natin ang karapatan ng ating mga katutubo at we will make sure that hindi po sila mapapaalis, lalong-lalo na nga po kung 'yan ay nasa sakop ng kanilang lupain ninuno. At sila po ay kasama sa lahat ng pagpaplano doon po sa protected area na sa kanilang nasasakupan.
Maraming salamat, Madam Sponsor. So sa inyong tinuran, dahil andito naman itong provision na ito, itong Section 13, or bagong Section 11, ang inyong sinasabi ay hindi malalabag ang karapatan ng ating mga katutubo. Gusto ko lang pong ipunto, nairehistro na kahit pa man sa kasalukuyan ay meron na nga sinasabing batas, halimbawa, para sa proteksyon ng ating mga katutubo, andyan ng IPR. Pero malinaw po na hindi ho kaila sa atin na tuloy-tuloy pa rin 'yung displacement ng ating mga indigenous peoples. 'yung displacement ng ating mga indigenous peoples mula po sa kanilang mga komunidad. In fact, even as we speak now, sa aming hong riyon, sa Mindanao, ay nagbabacwit ang mga katutubo dahil ang kanilang lupang ninuno ay pinag-iinteresan ng mga malalaking korporasyon. At ang tingin nga nila, maraming batas na binabalangkas, pero ito ay parang empty dahil hindi sila natutulungan. Napanggit niyo po kanina 'yung usapin ng COT or CALT, ano? Siguro naman po ay alam ng ating kagalangalang na sponsor, Madam Speaker, na mababa po ang antas ng pagpapalabas ng Certificate of Ancestral Land Titles or CALT ng NCIP. Paano po natin matitiyak na ang mga katutubong hindi naghahawak, walang hawak na COT or COT holder ay hindi mawawalan ng lupa o mapapalaya sa kanilang mga lupain? Paano po ang proseso, halimbawa sa mga lupang ninuno na hindi pa napailalim sa COT or CALT? Madam Sponsor, Madam Speaker.
Yun pong usapin ng COT ay nasasakop po 'yun ng ibang batas. Ang ating lamang pong pinag-uusapan at sinasakop, dito po sa ating pinag-uusapan na gusto nating 'yung panukalang batas, ay yoon pong mga lupain ninuno na nasasakop doon po sa idinidiklara na protected area. So yun po ang ating dapat mag-uusapan dito dahil iba po namang usapin at iba pong batas ang nakakasakop doon po sa mga ibang usapin ng pag-iisyo o sa mababang pag-isyo ng mga COT or COT na sinatawag po natin. Pero ako po sa aming lalawigan ay halos 90% na po ang naiisyo po namin doon sa aming mga katutubo. At yun pong problema natin sa Mindanao na, at alam ko po'y masakit din po sa loob natin, na yoon mga katutubo natin ay, yun nga sinasabi po 'yung bacwit, ay yun po naman ay iba rin pong usapin at iba rin po ang nakakasakop doon. Kaya ang sinasabi ko lamang po, that within the ambit of this bill, is that we will make sure, and I'm sure, that all the possible provisions to protect the rights of our indigenous peoples and indigenous cultural communities will be protected and that nobody will be displaced or will be driven out of their communities, especially if it is within their ancestral domain.
Maraming salamat po, kagalangalang sponsor, Madam Speaker. Kaya ko po naitanong 'yan dahil inaamin na rin natin na, totoo po, tama naman po 'yun, na ibang batas, nasa IPR ang usapin ng COT at CALT. Ang gusto ko pong puntuhin dito, paano po ang mga lupang ninuno na hindi pa naman nabigyan ng COT or CALT na masasakop na nitong mapapaloob dito sa expanded naipas? Hindi ho ba maging sagka, maging hendrance na dahil nasasakop na ito ng inaipas, sa pagdating ng panahon ay mawawala na sila ng karapatan, halimbawa, na mailagay ito, halimbawa, sa loob ng isang COT or CALT, Madam Sponsor, Madam Speaker? Meron ba ang assurance?
Meron pong provision dito sa ating isinusulong na batas na binibigyan po ng mandato o ng utos ang Pambi na within one year from the effectivity of this law, ay kailangang magkaroon sila ng masusing pag-aaral kung ano ang mga nandoon sa loob ng protected areas. At yoon pong, katulad ng sinabi ko, na isa sa katuparan po nila ang proteksyon noong mga katutubo sa kanilang pagpatuloy na pagtira doon po sa kanilang komunidad. Yun po ay isa sa mga provision na nandito at nabasa ko na rin po 'yan at meron pa pong isang provision na talagang nirerecognize po 'yung pre-existing rights nila.
Maraming salamat, Madam Sponsor. By the way, kanina po ay nabanggit ninyo na ang nasasakop na ngayon ng protected areas ay nasa mahigit isang daan?
Opo. Kung maaprubahan po natin itong additional 94. Kasi dalawampung taon na po na effective yoon dating batas natin ng naipas. Pero sa dalawampung taon po na 'yan, eh lalabing tatlo lamang po ang nalelegislate ng Congress na idiniklara na protected areas or national park. Ibig niyo sabihin po dalawampung taon eh lalabing tatlo. Ay sa napakarami po na naproklama na, nadelineate na, nademarket na na mga protected areas, pero ang nasa constitution po natin hindi po kompleto ang proseso hangga't hindi po nagkakaroon ng bata sa kongreso. Kaya ito pong 94 na nandito, na ating nakakompleto na po ng mahabang proseso para maging madiklara ng ating kongreso na protected areas o national park ay 94 lang po. So marami pa po na hindi pa nasasakop ng naipas. Pero meron din provision dito na yoon mga hindi pa nadidiklara na protected areas ay iconsider po sila na parte pa rin ng system at nilalagay po dito detalyado kung ano ang proseso nasusundin para itong mga protected areas na gusto nating maisabatas ay maisabatas na sa lalong madaling panahon dahil ang sabi nga po nating lahat, time is of the essence dahil habang nadidile, naidiklara natin na protected areas, ang mga ito ay lagi namang pong nagiging, 'yung sinasabi niyo nga po, ay napapasukan ng ibang interes at nasasalaula po naman talaga ang ating mga protected areas.
Maraming salamat po, Madam Sponsor, Madam Speaker. Just for the information of the body lang po, itong, kung naaproho natin itong dagdag na 94, so all in all, meron hong 107 areas, ano, na sasakupin ng inaipas. Just for the information of this body, ilang libong hektarya po ang sasakupin ito sa buong kapuluhan?
This will cover 53 provinces, 15 regions, and cover a total land area of 3,096,846 hectares, or approximately 10% of our country's total land area.
Maraming salamat po, Madam Sponsor, Madam Speaker. By the way, nabasa ko dito na isa sa mga provision. Tama po ba ang pagkakaintindi ko na pinagbabawal na po sa, dito sa inaipas, sa ating panukalang batas, ang poaching or sa tingin po ng mga katutubo dito ay pangangaso ito? Paano una po ito, kung ito ay pinagbabawal, paano natin ito maireconcile doon sa indigenous practice na ating mga katutubo na pangangaso para sa kanilang kabuhayan? Hindi po ba daan-taon na ang practice ito ng ating mga katutubo at iba pang mga upland settlers, ang pangangaso, pangangalap ng mga halamang gamot na likas namang ginagawa nila, lalo na sa mga liblib na pook? Ano po ang tingin ng kagalangalang na sponsor dito?
Alam niyo po, meron akong personal na eksperiensya sa sinasabi niyo. Dahil yun pong aming national park na kasama rin po dito, 'yung Mount Igleep Bako National Park, eh diyan po nakatira 'yung endangered species na tinatawag natin na tamaraw na doon lamang po sa aming isla ng Mindoro nakikita at nowhere else in the world. Dati po ang, marami rin pong poachers diyan at diyan ang nakapaligid po na community diyan ay 'yung mga mangyan communities namin. So ang aming pong ginawa diyan ay ginawa namin silang-sila na po ang tagabantay ng mga tamaraws namin at binigyan po sila ng alternative livelihood. At 'yan din po siguro ang maisasama dito doon sa kapangyarihan ng Pambi na kasama po ang ating mga nind- mga katutubo sa pagpaplano kung papaano pong mapoprotektahan 'yung mga livelihood ng tao at ng mga ibang nakikinabang doon sa protected areas. Nandito po yun sa batas na minamandate po at inuutusan ang Pambi na gumawa at mag-ano ng batas o ng plano upang maprotektahan ang livelihood. At kung 'yan po ay makakasira sa ating protected areas, ay bibigyan po ng alternatibong livelihood ang ating mga nakikinabang sa protected areas natin.
Salamat po, Madam Sponsor, Madam Speaker. Tama po, dahil dito sa ating panukalang batas, no, sa mga prohibited, isa sa mga prohibited acts ngayon, pero may nakalagay naman po din dito na without the necessary permit, authorization, or exemption, specifically doon who's usapin ng hunting, taking, collecting, or processing of any wildlife, etc. So ibig po bang sabihin ito? May mga pagkakataon rin, na mayroong ibang mga mamatao na pwede rin namang mangaso. Kaya tinanong ko 'yun dahil isa na hong kaugalian o isang tradisyon na o kabahagi na ng buhay ng ating mga lumad ng mga indigenous peoples talaga ang pangangaso. At ito ay ginagawa nila na hindi naman ho kumu- kumukuha ng permit. At alam nila ang batas ng kalikasan, hindi ho abusado ang mga katutubo natin kung mangasuman sila, ito ay para sa kanilang pangangailangan lamang at hindi para sa komersyal na sadya. Kaya, at nabanggit niyo ho, pwedeng magiging isang kapangyarihan o podern ng Pambi na magbalangkas, halimbawa ng mga regulation para mabigyan ng alternatibong kabuhayan ng ating mga katutubo. Pero ako lang ho ay medyo pagkabahala rito, sa formulation natin na, well, pinagbabawal 'yung pangangaso, nakabahagi naman ng practice na ng ating mga indigenous peoples, but in some ways, sinasabi natin pwede naman kumuha kayo ng permit. Ano ang, paano ho natin ito maireconcile, Madam Sponsor, Madam Speaker?
Kaya nga po, kasi may mga areas po na pwede pang payagan pero regulated po. Pero may mga areas po na talagang halos eh wala na kang mahuhuli diyan, na talagang endangered na po 'yung mga huhulihing hayop diyan, eh yun po ang ating paghigpitan. Kaya nga po nakalagay doon na ang Pambi po ay binibigyan ang karapatan na sila ay magkaroon ng masusing ugnayan sa indigenous peoples at sa lahat ng communities surrounding the protected areas.
Maraming salamat, Madam Sponsor, Madam Speaker. Ang sunod ko pong tanong, usa-usapin naman po ng mga penalties, ano?
Opo.
Dito po sa ating panukalang batas, kapansin-pansin na mataas po ang mga penalties na ipapataw sa mga lalabag dito sa panukalang batas, no? Sa tingin ko po, mabigat ito lalong-lalo na sa mga ordinaryong mga ngaso sa ating mga katutubo o iba pang upland settlers na papatawan ng ganito. Halimbawa po, ang mga katutubong nomadic, o nomadic pa sa kanilang pamamaraan, o kaya ang mga subsistence farmers natin, na nag-iengage sa kaingin, sila po ay papatawan ng malaking penalty. Ano po ang tingin ng ating kagalangalang na sponsors dito, sponsor dito? Hindi po ba gusto nating protektahan, protected area, pero paano naman po ang ating mga mamamayan? Mukhang naiipit po sila, Madam Sponsor, Madam Speaker?
Alam niyo po, masusi po 'yung aming pag-aaral dito sa penalties na inimpose namin dahil gusto po namin that this will serve as a deterrent to all and sundry para magkaroon ng talagang nipin ang batas na ito. Gusto ko lamang pong ipalaala sa ating kagalangalang na kasama sa kongresong ito na ang pinag-uusapan po natin dito ay yoon poching or 'yung sinasabing 'yung pangangaso sa protected areas, hindi po nasasakupa nito 'yung magabang sa labas ng protected areas. Ang ating lamang pong binibigyan ng tuong pansin dito ay 'yung protected areas dahil nandyan po sa protected areas ang mga endangered species na po natin na dapat talaga ay hindi po natin papatayin o hindi natin huhulihin, hindi na natin kakainin dahil ito po ay parte na ng ating patrimony. Kaya ang sinasabi ko po, hindi naman po pinagbabawal ang pangangaso outside the protected area. Ang ating lamang pong inaalagaan ay 'yung protected area dahil nandyan po 'yung mga endangered species natin.
Maraming salamat po, Madam Sponsor, Madam Speaker. Maganda po ang inventyon, deterrent, pero ang nakakabahala lang po talaga sa akin dito, halimbawa, 200,000 but not more than 1 million, na fine, and imprisonment of one year but not more than six years. Sa isahong ordinaryong lumad or katutubo, napakabigat po nito. Meron ho ba tayong pag saalang-alang dahil matatandaan po natin ang karamihan ng mga protected areas na ito ay nasa loob din ng lupang ninuno ng ating mga katutubo. Kaya direkta po, unang tatamaan ito ay ang ating mga katutubo. Siguro meron mga ilang settlers, pero kalakhan po sa tatamaan na papasok diyan sa tinatawag natin protected areas ay ang ating mga katutubo. Kaya parang napaka-excessive po ang tingin ko ng penalty na ito, ano? Hindi ho kaya ito ay labag sa ating, sa ligang batas na huwag namang mag-impose, napaka-excessive na fine or penalties po, Madam Sponsor?
Siguro po ay 'yung proteksyon po ng ating kalikasan at ng ating environment, eh wala po ang katapat na halaga. Mas mahal po at mas malaki at mas malawak ang magiging epekto sa ating kinabukasan kung hindi po natin po protektahan ang ating mga, 'yung ating protected areas po. As I've said, I would just want to emphasize the fact that kung sinasabi niyo po that these protected areas, most of these protected areas are within the ancestral domain of our indigenous peoples, but you should also realize na 'yung ancestral domains po natin ay napakalalawak po. Napaka-konti lang po, kumbaga'y isang tulduk lang po sa lawak ng ancestral domain itong protected areas natin. Kaya siguro po kailangan lamang ng masusing pag-aaral at yun nga pong sinasabi ko na inilalagay po dito at minamandatuhan ang ating Pambi na magkaroon ng plano para doon sa livelihood ng mga tao na dating kinukuha nila within the protected areas. Ako po ay nakikiusap that let us give due importance po ang kritikal na sitwasyon ng ating mga protected areas. Na talat po kahit na po sino ay dapat hindi na po sirain ang nakikita within the protected areas. Hindi naman po siguro excessive ito at hindi po naman siguro ito namimili ng ating paparusahan, but ito po ay ia-apply sa lahat ng tao na magba-violate ng provisions po ng ating ano. As I've said, we will always strive at nandito po sa batasya ng alternative livelihood for those people who can no longer get their livelihood from the protected areas.
Maraming salamat, Madam Sponsor, Madam Speaker. Sana nga po ay hindi mangyari ang aking pinangambahan na marami ho sa ating mga indigenous peoples o mga katutubo ay makulong dahil hindi nila kaya magbayad ng napakamahal at napakabigat na mga penalties na ito. Meron na lang ho akong ilan, apat uli limang katatungan. Napag-usapan na po natin, matagal na rin itong naipas, ano? Sa katunayan, mula nung 1992,
Dalawampung taon na po.
13, 13 areas na 'yung naideclear na under the naipas. At ang panukala natin ngayon, dagdag na 94 areas for the expanded naipas. Ang tanong ko po, sa loob po ng sinabi niyo kanina, dalawampung taon na nandyan ang naipas. Ang naipas po ba ay naging deterrent o naging sagka para po hindi makapasok ang mga mapanirang proyekto sa ating kalikasan? Tulad ho ng mga dambohalang dam at... Tulad ho ng mga dambohalang dam at mga mapaminsalang ah, 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 proyekto ng pagmina nitong nakaraang dalawang taon na andyan po 'yung batas ng NAIPAS. Madam Sponsor, Madam Speaker?
Kaya nga po tayo ah, naghahangad ngayon na maamayendahan ang ating ah, NAIPAS Law of 1992 dahil meron pong mga butas ang batas na 'yan na hindi po naging kaaya-aya o hindi po nakatulong sa pagpuprotektang tunay ng ating mga, ng ating kalikasan at ng ating protected areas. Kaya nga po mas marami po ang mga prohibited acts ngayon. Na 'yung sinasabi niyo, 'yung mga dambohalang, pagpalagay na natin example lang po ay 'yung mga dambohalang ah, nagmimina. Eh, dito po exploration lang eh bawal na po. Hindi na po pwedeng pasukan ng kahit na anong ah, pagmimina ang protected areas natin. Kahit nga po paglalagay ng mga ah, konkretong infrastruktura ah, within the protected areas ay pinagbabawal din po. Ah, 'yun lamang pong ahm, ah, pagpapasok ng ah, species na hindi po talaga endemic sa ating na, sa ating protected areas ay pinagbabawal na din. 'Yung pagpasok ng GMO or genetically modified organism doon sa ating protected areas ay pinagbabawal na rin po. Kaya ah, 'yun pong ah, maganda ang ating ah, nasimula ng NAIPAS of 1992. Pero marami pa pong pulang doon at ito nga po ang gusto nating gawin dito sa ating isinusulong na batas.
Maraming salamat ah, Madam Sponsor, Madam Speaker. Ah, nitanong ko 'yan dahil totoo po, no? Halimbawa ah, sa bukid nun, ang maong kitanglad is a protected area, no? Pero ito po ay bat-bat ng maraming ah, ah, mining application, no? At kahit ho sa Occidental Mindoro, may areas diyan na covered na ng NAIPAS, no? Pero hindi rin ito nakaligtas.
So, Occidental Mindoro po ay hindi po kami pumapayag na nagmimina. We have declared Occidental Mindoro as a mining free zone.
Maraming salamat po. Ahm, dito po sa, so ganun po ang nangyari nung nakaraang dalawang ah, dekada, no? Kung saan andyan ang NAIPAS, ah, hindi ito naging hadlang para pasukin ng mga mapaminsalang ah, proyekto ng pagmimina, ng mga dambohalang dam ang mga protected areas, no? Ah, na nagresulta naman, hindi lang sa pagkasira ng protected area kundi displacement ng ating mga mamamayan, lalong-lalo na ang ating mga katutubo. Pero dito naman po sa ating sinusulong na panukalang batas, ah, nabasa ko rin po na ah, pinapayagan din natin pumasok ang mga proyektong enerhiya, no? Energy projects sa mga protected areas. Basta ito ay pumasas sa ating EIA system, no? So, anong, anong klase pong mga energy projects ang papayagan natin na pwedeng pumasok sa expanded protected areas?
Nakalagay.
For as long as they ah, submit, no? Or ah, go through the environmental impact assessment ah, ah, system, Madam Sponsor, Madam Speaker?
Ang ah, pinapayagan lamang po ay nakalahad po 'yan sa section 14. Ah, at 'yan po ay payagan niyo po akong basahin na consistent with the policies declared ah, in this bill, the exploration for energy resources may be allowed in protected areas only for the purpose of gathering data and information. And only if such activity is carried out with the least damage to surrounding areas. Surveys for non-renewable energy projects, 'yun lamang po, non-renewable ah, energy projects shall be conducted only in accordance with the program approved by the DNR. And the result of such survey shall be made available to the public and submitted to the president who shall make the appropriate recommendations to Congress. The development and operation of non-renewable energy projects are prohibited in areas classified as strict natural reserves and natural parks. 'Yun po, basta sa na, 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 strict nature reserves and natural parks, hindi po inaalaw 'yan. But for all others, ang inaalaw lang po sa energy projects 'yan ay 'yung non-renewable po.
Maraming salamat Madam Sponsor, Madam Speaker. Ah, pero tama po 'yun, no? Ah, pero ang kasunod ho kasi na statement diyan, no? Nasa ating panukalang batas rin and I think ah, parang ah, there's a inconsistency, no? Dito sa ating panukala. Ah, ang nakalagay naman din po, energy projects within protected area including strict nature reserves and natural parks shall only be allowed through an act of Congress.
Andito po 'yan.
Yeah. So, ibig pong sabihin, even in areas considered as strict nature reserves and natural parks, pwede pa rin pong pumasok ang mga proyektong ito for as long as papayagan ng kongreso. So, hindi ho siya absoluto, no? Ah, alam naman po natin, kung pupunta sa kongreso at pinayagan ito, halimbawa ho, gusto maglagay ng napakalaking ah, coal-fired power plant, no? Dahil 'yan ay isang non-renewable energy project, no? At sasabihin na, nakara- pinayagan ako ng kongreso eh. So, it defeats the purpose of protecting the protected area, no? 'Yan po ang gusto ko puntuhin dito, inconsistent po ang mga provision na ito. Sabi natin, protectionan, bawal ang mga, ang mga mapaminsalang ah, energy projects. Kung papayagan man sila, hindi dapat sa loob ng areas classified as nature reserves and natural parks. But on the second, the next breath, eto pala pwedeng payagan pag merong ahm, pagpapayag ng kongreso. Ano ang ah, ating masasager.
Ang presansyon naman po kasi dito dahil kung sa pangangailangan po para sa enerhiya, ay magkakaroon naman po ng masusi at malawak na konsultasyon bago po ah, kumayag ang kongreso. At ah, inaano rin po na kung ah, pag- kahit na payagan 'yan ng ating kongreso, ay magkakaroon din po ng striktong at masusi na, na pag-aaral diyan dahil ah, may requirement po ng environmental impact assessment. Na 'yan po ay ah, medyo mahigpit din ang, ang, ang proseso ah, bago po talaga magkaroon ng, ng pahintulo't na sila ay magkaroon ng renewable ah, energy project diyan sa ating protected areas.
Maraming salamat ah, Madam Sponsor. Ah, 'yun na nga po ang ah, gusto nating puntuhin dito. Etto po't pinagdidiba- ah, debatihan natin ngayon, nagpapanukala tayo ng saligang batas ng kongresong ito. Kung gusto ho talaga nating ah, ah, tunay na mapangalagaan itong mga areas na ko, sasakupin itong ah, panodagdag na 94 areas, ay isaranan natin, no? Kung talagang gusto nating mapreserve 'yung ah, natural parks, ah, nature reserves, ayaw nating payagan na masira ito sa mga mapaminsalang proyektong enerhiya, ay sabihin na natin ngayon, no?
'Yun po ba ay ininahain niyo bilang amyenda dito sa aming isinusulong na panukalang batas? Kung 'yan po ay ah, inyong isinusulong ay ah, sa tamang panahon po ay ibigay niyo po sa amin at amin pong iku-consider.
Maraming salamat Madam Sponsor. At ah, bilang panghuli po, ito po ay isang ah, mainit na usapin ngayon, no? Andito tayo, nagpapanukala ng ah, isang batas para pangalagaan ang ating kalikasan at ang mga mamamayan. Ah, sa loob ng mga pamayanang ito o mga areas na covered nito. Ano po sa tingin ninyo, ah, magiging epekto halimbawa? Kung ah, aamindahan at baguhin ang ating saligan batas, ah, sasabihin ang ating bagong saligang batas na lahat ng mga protected areas na ito ay mapawalang bisan na? At dahil ibubukas na ang mga protected areas na 'yan ah, sa control at exploration, pagmamayari ng mga ah, mga dayuhan, Madam Sponsor, Madam Speaker?
Hindi naman po ako naniniwala na ang ah, ang aking pong paniniwala sa bawat isa na nandito sa kongresong ito ay tatayo at maninindigan para protektahan ang ating kalikasan. Kaya ako po ay ah, hindi naniniwala na magkakaroon ng ganyang ah, panukala para sa pag-aamayenda ng ating konstitusyon. Alam ko po na magigiting at mangabayani ang mga tao dito. At ang first and foremost among us is to protect the patrimony of our nation.
Maraming salamat ah, Madam Sponsor, Madam Speaker. Ah, sa inyong pong pagpapaunlak sa ating mga katunungan at paglilinaw. At sana nga po ah, ang magiging ah, makabuluhan ang ah, objectives ng ah, panukalang batas na ito. Pag naghapon ho sa ating.
Maraming salamat po.
Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, before we call on the next interpellant, we'd like to acknowledge our guests with us in the gallery today, the members of the Constitutional Reformers for Federal Philippines led by Cesar Secretary Raúl Lambino. They are the guests of the Honorable Congresswoman Gloria Macapagal Arroyo of the 3rd District of Pampanga.
We welcome to the House of Representatives the guests of the Honorable Gloria Macapagal Arroyo led by the Honorable Cesar Lambino. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, may recognize the Honorable Tom Villarreal of Acbayan Party List for his interpolation. So move, Madam Speaker.
The Honorable Tom Villarreal is recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker, thank you, Majority Leader. Would a good sponsor be open to some questions?
Gladly and willingly, Your Honor.
Ah, this is not ah, to go against the proposed measure but ah, I would just like to raise some ah, points that could in a way resolve certain concerns that I think should ah, be included, Madam Speaker, in the proposed measure. Ah, in particular, ah, when we talk about ah, the protected area system, ah, there's a saying that this would be a ridge-to-reef ah, ah, in terms of the inclusivity of ah, what should be protected. Ah, is the good sponsor supportive of that idea?
Yeah.
Ah, because in, in, in the definition of what should be inclusive, ah, the line in section 4A, it says managed landscape, seascape.
Okay, excuse me, what line please?
Ah, section 4A po.
4?
A. Ah, on the sentence managed landscape, seascape, as well as identified old growth forests. And ah, for, for this representation, Madam Speaker, if we take on the concept of protection of ridge-to-reef, ah, I think the word reef should be included after the old growth forest. So, meaning ah, the protection should extend towards marine areas such as reefs and marine breeding ground. So, ah, would, would that? Would that protection ah, be inclusive of ah, the marine areas?
What page are, I, I don't think I'm, I was able to follow you. Section 4?
Madam Speaker, perhaps in the, in the amendments part, ah, I would submit the same. But the general concept is that ah, in the protect ah, protected area systems, ah, would, would this bill encompass the concept of ah, ridge-to-reef ah, protection?
Yes, ah, so if, if you have some ah, proposed amendments, Your Honor, maybe you can just submit it to us?
Yes, thank you, Madam.
Because the section 4 that you are quoting is not the section 4 that I have here.
Ah, perhaps in the amendments that we would ah, propose, no? Now, on the issue, Madam Speaker, of ah, the composition of the ah, protected area management board, no?
The Pambib.
Under the present PAMB, we expanded it, no? But I'm just ah, I'm just ah, apprehensive, no? About including ah, senators and members of the House in an executive body. No? Because the Pambib executes, no? The policies, laws of the land. And here we are legislators being made, members of such ah, executive body. So, my apprehension would be on the constitutionality ah, of that, of this ah, provision. This would be violated of the principle of separation of powers being that members of the legislative branch should not be given authority and jurisdiction over responsibilities meant for the executive.
Yeah, ah, the senator or a duly authorized representative, where the senator is a duly registered resident where the protected area is located. And the district representatives were included because of the um, several complaints of our ah, um, congressmen that um, in the implementation of, of, or of this, of ah, bills on environment, ah, they are not being consulted. And this is also pursuant to the provision of this bill ah, providing for a joint congressional oversight committee. So that ah, I, I, I don't subscribe to the ah, apprehension of the honorable gentleman that this will be unconstitutional and that ah, the mere, ah, mere ah, membership of a legislature, legislator in a, 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 ah, an executive ah, agency is an abdication of his or her legislative function. Ah, this is just to make sure that ah, that ah, the laws are being followed and implemented properly.
Ah, I am in agreement that ah, perhaps a joint oversight, ah, congressional oversight committee ah, can be the body, no? That would ah, see to it that the full implementation of this law ah, can be made, no? But the PAMB ah, is basically ah, an executive ah, body. So, meaning that if we include members of the legislature in such executive body, this would be ultra vires in the sense that this is beyond the jurisdiction of legislators to be a part of the executive branch. So, that is just my apprehension, Madam Speaker.
We will look into that, Your Honor.
Yes. Thank you ah, good sponsor, Madam Speaker. Ah, there are also issues, no? About the people. Ah, my third point, Madam Speaker, is ah, in a NAIPAS area, certainly we have ah, people. And people over environment or certainly people ah, need to exist also in the protected area system. It was ah, pointed out earlier that ah, we have indigenous peoples in such protected areas. And ah, it is very crucial, no? That ah, their representation in this PAMB ah, should ah, be enhanced, no? And ah, certainly ah, stakeholder participation is very important because protection will not come from those ah, outside the protected area. Protection would really be.
Coming from within.
Made ah, effective if the people themselves in the protected area systems ah, are included. So, I'm appreciative of that fact that this is in this bill that it has been enhanced. Although certainly in the period of amendments, we'll just submit some wordings as to the effect that ah, representation should be mandatory and the, the composition of the representation should also be more inclusive.
Yeah, we, we, we appreciate that, Your Honor. That's precisely the reason why we expanded the membership of Pambib because we would want it to be transparent and participatory.
Ah, and there are several very specific items that ah, well, perhaps through Congresswoman Kakak Bagaw, I would just submit to her because ah, she has manifested earlier to, to, to be the one to, to give the recommendations instead of just discussing the very specifics in the floor. So, those are all just my concerns, Madam Speaker, good sponsor. And thank you for the opportunity to enhance the measure.
Thank you very much. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move that we suspend consideration on House Bill 67. Madam Speaker, with no other member who wishes to interpolate, I move that we close the period of sponsorship and debate.
Is there any objection? The chair here is none. The motion is approved.
Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move that we suspend consideration on House Bill 6772.
Any objections? Hearing none. The motion is approved. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move that we consider House Bill Number 6923, embodied in Committee Report Number 564, and direct the Secretary General to read the title of the bill.
Any objections? Hearing none. The motion is approved. Secretary General is directed to read the title of the bill.
House Bill Number 6923, An Act Strengthening the Philippine Crop Insurance Corporation, repealing for the purpose Presidential Decree Number 1467, entitled Creating the Philippine Crop Insurance Corporation, prescribing its powers and activities, providing for its capitalization and for the required government premium subsidy, and for other purposes, as amended by Presidential Decree Number 1733 and Republic Act Number 8175.
Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move that we open the period of sponsorship and debate.
Any objections? The Chair hears none. The motion is approved.
Madam Speaker, I move that we recognize the Honorable Chairman of the Committee on Government Enterprises and Privatization, the Honorable Jesus Sakdalan, for his sponsorship speech.
The Honorable Jesus Sakdalan is recognized.
Mr. Madam Speaker, the objective of this bill, the different bills that we have incorporated is to expand the type of agricultural crops that can be insured by the Philippine Crop Insurance Corporation and to include life and accident insurance to farmers and fishers' pork and their dependent, to strengthen the financial and national insurance capacity of the PCIC, and to encourage private insurance companies to offer crop insurance. This will include all the other crops that are being introduced in the country. So I hope that this strengthening of the Philippine Crop Insurance Corporation be approved.
Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move that we open the period of interpolation.
Any objections? Chair hears none. The motion is approved. Period of interpolation is open.
Madam Speaker, I withdraw my previous motion. I move that we recognize the Honorable Tony Bravo for his sponsorship speech.
Motion is withdrawn. The Honorable Anthony Bravo is recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Thank you, Majority Leader. Mr. Speaker, Madam Speaker, distinguished colleagues, good afternoon. This is my honor and privilege to sponsor House Bill Number 6923, under Committee Report Number 564, entitled An Act Strengthening the Philippine Crop Insurance Corporation, or PCIC, repelling for the purpose Presidential Decree Number 1467, entitled Creating the Philippine Crop Insurance Corporation, prescribing its powers and activities, providing for its capitalization and for other purposes, as amended by Presidential Decree Number 1733 and Republic Act Number 8175. This bill is not only favorable to the Filipino farmers, but to the country as a whole, as crop insurance is one major component of ensuring food security. The impact of climate change is glaring. In the previous years, we have witnessed several catastrophic typhoons, floods, and droughts that left billions of damages to agriculture and fishery sectors. In 2016, Typonina alone has left an estimated 4.1 billion production losses, according to the Department of Agriculture. These losses affected the production of rice, corn, and high-value crops, including vegetables and fruit trees, that cover a total of around 80,000 hectares of farmland in the Bicol region. By strengthening the PCIC, this proposed measure also authorizes the agency to do the following: to extend life in accident insurance coverages for farmers and fisherfolks, to insure properties and facilities of the government used in agri-fishery-forestry projects, to offer weather index-based insurance specifically for excessive or insufficient rainfall, to offer crop insurance to encourage private commercial banks to sell crop insurance. Madam Speaker, given these notable provisions, we are more than happy to present this proposed measure that address the present predicament of our farmers, the threat to the food security, and the limitation to the institutional capacity of the PCIC. Let us give our farmers a safety net that they deserve so we would have a food security or secure country and an empowered agricultural sector. In summary, House Bill 6923, or the revised charter of Philippine Crop Insurance Corporation, is crafted to ensure food security, alleviate the financial burden of farmers, and strengthen the PCIC itself. Madam Speaker, honorable member of this August chamber, let us pass this very important digitation with dispatch. Thank you, Madam Speaker, distinguished colleagues.
Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, there being no interpolators for House Bill 6923, I move that we close the period of interpolation. So move, Madam Speaker.
Is there any objection? The Chair hears none. The motion is approved. The period for interpolation is hereby closed.
Madam Speaker, I move that we open the period of amendments.
Is there any objection? Hearing none. The motion is approved.
Madam Speaker, there being no committee amendments or individual amendments, I move that we close the period of amendments.
Any objections? The Chair hears none. The motion is approved.
Madam Speaker, I move that we approve for second reading, House Bill 6923. So move, Madam Speaker.
Is there any objection? The Chair hears none. The motion is approved. As many as are in favor of House Bill 6923 say aye. As many as are opposed say nay. The ayes have it. House Bill 6923 is hereby approved on second reading. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move that we begin consideration of House Bill Number 6775, and may we request the Secretary General to read the title of the bill.
Any objections? Hearing none. The motion is approved. Secretary General is directed to read the title of the bill.
House Bill Number 6775, An Act Creating the Department of Human Settlements and Urban Development, Defining Its Mandates, Powers, and Functions, and Providing Funds Therefore.
Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move that we recognize the Honorable Ex-J. Romaldo of Camiggin to read his sponsorship speech.
The Honorable Romaldo is recognized for his sponsorship speech.
Thank you, Madam Speaker, Majority Leader. Madam Speaker, esteemed colleagues, ladies and gentlemen, good afternoon. I stand here, Madam Speaker, to sponsor House Bill Number 6775, An Act Creating the Department of Human Settlements and Urban Development, Defining Its Mandates, Powers, and Functions, and Providing Funds Therefore. In short, this measure seeks to create what we have been pushing and articulating for, for many years here in Congress, a separate Department of Housing. Article 13, Section 9 of the Constitution states that the state shall by law and for the common good undertake in cooperation with the private sector a continuing program of urban land reform and housing, which will make available at affordable cost decent housing and basic services to the underprivileged and homeless citizens in urban centers and resettlement areas. It shall also promote adequate employment opportunities to such citizens. And in the implementation of such program, the state shall respect the rights of small property owners. The reason why the issue of housing has been a subject of such significance are many, and I believe are of utmost importance. This administration, just like the previous administration, has recognized this. Hence, the new bill has merited inclusion in the LEDAC priorities. Madam Speaker, as been pointed out many times before, the government must be able to face and address the issues and challenges of rapid urbanization, urban growth, increasing urban poverty, and worsening urban environment. All of us are witnesses to the congestions and urban blight permeating the landscape, not only in Metro Manila, but in other highly urbanized areas, which we can no longer ignore. Indeed, the heightening number of sprouting informal settlers in public and private lands is alarming. From the standpoint of many of our people, there seems to be no official policy or action or specific agency of government to take the resolution of the housing problem to the next level. In fact, it looks like even as parts of the quagmire of the resettlement issues are resolved, a big number of informal settlers are moving in droves, which complicates the housing problem further. This can be likened to a wobbly individual who may never be able to reach his destination, moving one step forward, two steps backwards, perpetual, a perpetual motion kind of thing, with only a semblance of forward action. It's very sad that some of the informal settlers have forcibly occupied and took over the possession of some houses in Pandibulakan out of extreme desire and necessity to have their own homes. For us legislators, this is a loud call to seriously address their concerns. We know that the current housing agencies are doing their utmost best to resolve this problem of housing and urban development. The National Housing Authority, the National Home Mortgage Finance Corporation, the Home Development Mutual Fund, or Pag-ibig, the Home Guarantee Corporation, and the Housing and Land Use Regulatory Board are in fact all there to oversee the different aspects of this important urban issue, as well as to cater to the needs and requirements of the sectors and communities. These agencies called the key shelter agencies have all the bases amply covered. But what could then be the problem? The primary law in effect is Republic Act Number 7279, or the Urban Development and Housing Act of 1992. Each presently, each of the key shelter agencies have their own governing bodies, responsibilities, personnel, systems, and procedures. The National Housing Authority is the agency directly engaged in direct production of shelter needs and providing housing assistance to the lowest urban income earners. The Pag-ibig Fund focuses on the administration of a nationwide provident fund for the government's housing program. The Home Guarantee Corporation mobilizes the resources to broaden capital requirements for low-income housing purposes. The National Home Mortgage Finance Corporation functions to operate a viable home mortgage market. And the Housing and Land Use Regulatory Board is the regulatory body for housing and land development. But on top of all of these, another layer in the structure is the Housing and Urban Development Coordinating Council, the highest policymaking body that has administrative supervision over all these agencies. Taking all of this into consideration and the negative experiences of beneficiaries, where policies are sometimes conflicting, shelter program being beset by a huge backlog at an estimated 5.7 million and increasing housing need, inefficiencies, inefficiencies, there is indeed a need to establish an integrated and comprehensive housing planning agency to address the requirements of the Filipino family. The NHA is set to build close to a million housing units in a span of five years. Chapter 12 of the Philippine Development Plan states that for the period 2017 to 2022, the housing sector targets to deliver direct housing assistance to 1,558,711 households, mainly through NHA housing production, social housing finance corporation, community-driven shelter programs, and home development mutual fund and user financing programs. Out of the 1.5 million target housing assistance from 2017 to 2022, the NHA will lead the building of at least 835,203 shelters to support the country's response to the challenges confronting our human settlements. Housing assistance for calamity victims will get the biggest chunk of the project, with 378,612 units allocated, followed by informal settler families with 333,78 units, 41,405 for the members of the Armed Forces of the Philippines and the Philippine National Police, settlement upgrading with 39,454, cost recovery housing, this is employees' housing, with 24,100, while high-impact projects and vertical developments will be implementing 15,800 and 2,754 units respectively. Thus, Madam Speaker, the need to streamline and coordinate the various shelter agencies under a central department so that current policies would be able to work towards a full and timely response to address the housing problem. As a full-fledged department, it will be able to reshape the process of formulating significant human settlement programs to meet the demands of the country's increasing population and decreasing space, a new government entity that will provide the necessary focus, impetus, and adequate funding to address the needs and pressing concerns of the housing sector. Restructuring and rationalizing the functions of financial housing agencies therefore represent a principal interest in this institutional reform agenda. Madam Speaker, many have also commented on one other aspect of this shelter issue, the need to align the incongruence between local and national planning and address the housing and urban development. Such a lack of linkage between local land use, the local land use plan or physical plan or community development plan in the one hand, and the national investment and budgeting guidelines on the other only creates confusion and divergence of efforts in seeking and propagating development in the countryside. The housing bill, this bill you're sponsoring today, has been filed as early as the 8th Congress to reform what previous members of the House saw was a critical flaw and inefficiencies in the system and in the present law. The House of Representatives, this body, has consistently passed a bill creating a department that shall cater to the housing sector in the 8th, 9th, 12th, 13th, and 16th Congresses. Madam Speaker, the consistent intent of the members of the House to enact such a law is very much evident over the years. Unfortunately, for one reason or another, previous efforts have faltered and we have been unable to enact a Department of Housing law. But this fact does not discourage us, does not discourage the authors and the members of the House to come up with a legislation that will address persistent housing-related problems in the country today, ranging from backlog in providing a decent and affordable housing, access to financing for housing loans and housing projects, resettlement of informal settlers, and the proposal to reorganize the key shelter agencies under one roof and under one direction for better governance. We ask the members of the House now to look at how we in Congress would put this new framework to work under a new Department of Human Settlements and Urban Development. And we know that we in the 17th Congress stand proud that we have been able to leave a program that would start to hasten the process not only of minimizing, if not eradicating, urban blight, but also of helping our poor kababayans live decent and fruitful lives. Accordingly, for all these reasons, Madam Speaker, we would like to ask our esteemed colleagues to approve the bill creating the Department of Housing Department of Human Settlements and Urban Development as embodied under House Bill Number 6775. Thank you, Madam Speaker. Thank you, distinguished colleagues.
Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move that we recognize the Honorable Chairman of the Committee on Housing and Urban Development, the Honorable Albi Benitez, for his sponsorship speech.
The Honorable Albi Benitez is recognized for his sponsorship speech.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Before I proceed with my sponsorship of this important measure, may I humbly inform this august body that the Committee on Housing and Urban Development, along with its Senate counterpart, sponsored a 10-month National Housing Summit and Urban Development, which began which began on May 27, 2015, and culminated on April 4, 2016. The summit was participated by all key shelter agencies, other relevant government agencies, the urban poor, private developers, civil society organizations, the academe, and housing and urban development experts. That summit recommended the creation of a Department of Human Settlements and Urban Development. Madam Speaker, esteemed colleagues, the measure before us is long overdue. It may interest the members of this August chamber to note that this measure was first filed as early as the Eighth Congress. Thereafter, the measure took the following legislative path. In the Ninth Congress, it was filed by no less than Speaker Jose de Venesia, along with over a hundred co-authors. The House approved the measures on third reading. In the Tenth Congress, it was refiled, but was not accorded the House the same enthusiasm. In the Eleventh Congress, it was approved by the Joint Committees, but met less favorable fate in the Committee on Appropriations. In the Twelve and the Thirteen Congresses, the House approved it on third reading respectively. In the Fourteenth Congress, it lost steam as the hands of the concerned shelter agencies were tied by the rationalization program of the government under Executive Area Number 366. In the Fifteenth Congress, the Joint Committees approved the measure and reached the plenary, but only to stay on freeze after the sponsorship speech. However, the measure passed the Senate on that Congress. In the Last Congress, the House again approved it on third reading, but failed to get the nod of the Senate. Indeed, time and again, it was a frustrating case of being so near, yet so far, for this vital piece of legislation. In keeping with the Constitution, Congress enacted in 1992 Republic Act 7279, or the Urban Development Housing Act, which provides a government program for shelter and urban development. What government seemed to have overlooked was the enormous demands of this program as it created through Executive Order Number Nine, a mere coordinating body to oversee the work of the various key shelter agencies under it. The need for a government machinery that will run the government's housing program cannot be overemphasized. Three million housing units were registered as backlog when Republic Act 7279 was signed into law in 1992. It must be admitted with much regret that the government has failed to solve the shelter problem. Proof of this is the fact that we still grapple with the same problem today as some six million housing needs stare us in the face. There is no silver lining in sight as the population continues to grow faster than government can provide roof over people's heads. We in the Committee on Housing and Urban Development have toiled to bring to plenary committee reports that on very timely and urgent housing and urban development concerns for our poor constituents. But we strongly believe that the key to the country's shelter quandary is the creation of the Department of Human Settlements and Urban Development. It is hard time we took the task of not only providing housing, but establishing and nurturing human settlements and managing urban development seriously by re-engineering the puny coordinating body and elevating it into a full-fledged cabinet-run agency. The Department will not only be concerned with the provisions of housing, but will focus on building committees or habitats in both rural and urban areas where people settle themselves to live. It will not only deal with the physical element of housing, but likewise provide the necessary link to community services and components such as education, health, culture, welfare, recreation, food, and nutrition. What we have on the floor is the best version of the bill on the Department's creation since it was filed in 1989, almost three decades ago. Neither is it a photocopy of an old bill or a hastily rehashed copy, filled with gaping loopholes, nor is it an assembled from mutilated provisions from various dead bills into a legislative Frankenstein. The bill is rather a product of one score and eight years of refinement and craftsmanship in the art of legislation and democratic consultation. Madam Speaker, distinguished colleague, let it be said therefore that our approval of this long overdue legislation shall reaffirm, reassert the House political will to introduce change for the better and to serve the greater good. We cannot achieve our dream of inclusive development if we cannot address the basic problem of housing. The creation of this Department of Human Settlements is a critical step towards helping our citizens realize their dream of having their very own house. This Department will serve as a robust backbone structure towards building a stronger nation. Our imprimatur on this measure signals a resolve to join other countries that have elevated the matter of human settlements and urban development to a department or a ministry level. Madam Speaker, distinguished colleagues, the singular purpose of this bill, the pursuit of a long overdue quest, that is to speed up shelter delivery, solve prevailing housing urbanization problems, and we in the Committee on Housing and Urban Development take pride and honor in bringing them to plenary for your support and approval. Maraming salamat.
Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move that we suspend consideration on House Bill 6775. So move, Madam Speaker, Your Honor.
Is there any objection? The Chair hears none. The motion is approved. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, in accordance with our rules, governing inquiries in aid of legislation, I move that we refer the following House resolutions to the appropriate committees. House Resolution 1487, Appropriations; 1489, Basic Education and Culture; 1492, Health; 1496, National Defense and Security and Public Order and Safety; 1497, Agriculture and Food; 1500, Committee on Overseas Workers Affairs; 1502, Government Enterprises and Privatization; 1505, Committee on Natural Resources; 1512, Agriculture and Food; 1519, Good Government and Public Accountability and Health; 1520, Good Government and Public Accountability; 1546, National Defense and Security; 1547, Public Order and Safety; 1548, Agriculture and Food; 1551, Good Government and Public Accountability; 1557, Housing and Urban Development; 1558, Good Government and Public Accountability; 1563, Metro Manila Development; 1567, National Defense and Security; 1570, Information and Communications Technology; 1571, Public Order and Safety, and House Resolution 1572 to the Committee on Public Order and Safety. So move, Madam Speaker, Your Honor.
Is there any objection? The Chair hears none. The motion is approved. The aforementioned House Resolutions are hereby referred to the appropriate committees. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move for the change of referral of the following measures. House Bill Number 126 from the Committee on Local Government to the Committee on Transportation; House Bill 2332 from the Committee on Public Order and Safety to the Committee on Welfare of Children; House Bill 4223 from the Special Committee on Food Security to the Committee on Government Reorganization and Special Committee on Food Security; House Bill 6742 from the Committee on Trade and Industry and Economic Affairs to the Committee on Economic Affairs and Trade and Industry.
Is there any objection? Please proceed.
House Resolution 1505 and privileged speech of Rep. Vergara delivered on November 27, 2017, from the Committee on Natural Resources to the Committee on Good Government and Public Accountability. So move, Madam Speaker, Your Honor.
Is there any objection? The Chair hears none. The motion is approved.
Madam Speaker, the Senate passed with amendments House Bill Number 3179. We have been informed that the Committee on Higher and Technical Education, sponsor of House Bill Number 3179, as well as the authors thereof, have no objection to the amendments introduced thereto by the Senate. Madam Speaker, in accordance with the rules, I move that we concur with the Senate amendments to House Bill Number 3179.
Any objections? Hearing none. The motion is approved.
Madam Speaker, the Senate passed with amendments House Bill Number 5146. We have been informed that the Committee on Higher and Technical Education, sponsor of House Bill 5146, as well as the authors thereof, have no objection to the amendments introduced thereto by the Senate. Madam Speaker, in accordance with the rules, I move that we concur with the Senate amendments to House Bill Number 5146.
Is there any objection? The Chair hears none. The motion is approved.
Madam Speaker, the Senate passed with amendments House Bill Number 2737. We have been informed that the Committee on Higher and Technical Education and the sponsors and authors have no objection to the amendments introduced by the Senate. In accordance with the rules, I move that we concur with Senate amendments to House Bill 2737.
Any objections? Hearing none. The motion is approved.
Madam Speaker, the Senate passed with amendments House Bill Number 5148. I've been informed that the Committee on Higher and Technical Education, the sponsor and authors thereof, have no objection to the amendments thereto by the Senate. In accordance with the rules, I move that we concur with Senate amendments to House Bill 5148.
Any objection? The Chair hears none. The motion is approved.
Madam Speaker, the Senate passed with amendments House Bill Number 5150. We have been informed that the Committee on Higher and Technical Education, the sponsor and all authors, have no objection to the amendments introduced thereto by the Senate. In accordance with the rules, I move that we concur with Senate amendments Number 51, Senate amendments to House Bill 5150.
Any objections? Hearing none. The motion is approved.
Madam Speaker, the Senate passed with amendments House Bill Number 5147. We have been informed that the Committee on Higher and Technical Education, all the sponsor and authors have no objection to the amendments thereto by the Senate. Madam Speaker, in accordance with the rules, I move that we concur with Senate amendments to House Bill 5147.
Any objection? Hearing none. The motion is approved.
Madam Speaker, the Senate passed with amendments House Bill Number 5149. We have been informed that the committee, the sponsor, and the author have no objection to the amendments introduced thereto by the Senate. Madam Speaker, in accordance with the rules, I move that we concur with the Senate amendments of House Bill Number 5149.
Any objection? Hearing none. The motion is approved.
Madam Speaker, the Senate passed with amendments House Bill Number 5151. We have been informed that the Committee on Higher and Technical Education, sponsor and authors, have no objection to the amendments introduced by the Senate. Madam Speaker, in accordance with the rules, I have moved that we concur with Senate amendments to House Bill Number 5151.
Is there any objection? The Chair hears none. The motion is approved.
Madam Speaker, the House and the Senate have approved on third reading House Joint Resolution Number 15 and Senate Joint Resolution Number 8 respectively, both of which seek to authorize that any National Housing Authority to award to other qualified beneficiaries the unawarded housing units in the AFP, PNP, BFP, PJMP, and Bucor. We have been informed that the Committee on Housing and Urban Development, sponsor of House Joint Resolution Number 15, as well as the author thereof, are in concurrence with the provisions of Senate Joint Resolution Number 8. Madam Speaker, in accordance with the rules, I move that we adopt Senate Joint Resolution Number 8 as an amendment to House Joint Resolution Number 15.
Is there an objection? The Chair hears none. The motion is approved.
Madam Speaker, I move that we include additional co-authors to the House, to House Bill Numbers 6775, 6782, and 6913 as contained in the list to be submitted by the Committee on Rules. So move, Madam Speaker, Your Honor.
Any objection? Hearing none. The motion is approved. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move that we take up additional reference of business and direct the Secretary General to read the title of the bill.
Any objections? Hearing none. The motion is approved. The Secretary General is directed to read the titles of the bills.
Additional reference of business, built on proceeding, House Bill 6975, instituting the Food and Drug Administration, Representative Tan Angelina.
To the Committee on Government Reorganization and the Committee on Health.
House Bill 6976, transferring to the Bureau of Jail Management and Penology, the authority to exercise supervision and control over provincial jails, Representatives Alvarez, Fariñas, Suarez, and Daza.
To the Committee on Justice.
House Bill Number 6977, creating four additional branches of the RTC in the 11th Judicial Region, Representatives Alvarez and Gonzaga.
To the Committee on Justice.
House Bill Number 6978, establishing the National Transportation Safety Board, Representative Fariñas.
To the Committee on Government Reorganization and the Committee on Transportation.
Resolution, House Resolution 1602, expressing the profound condolences of the House to the family of former passing mayor Solidad C. Yusebio, mother of Representative Richard C. Yusebio of the Long District of Passing City, Representatives Alvarez, Fariñas, and Suarez.
To the Committee on Rules.
House Resolution Number 1603, expressing the profound condolences of the House to the family of Mrs. Henirossa Navarro Chu, mother of Representative Julia T. Uy of the Second Legislative District of Misamis Oriental, Representatives Alvarez, Fariñas, and Suarez.
To the Committee on Rules. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move that we consider House Resolution Number 1573 and direct the Secretary General to read the title of the resolution.
Any objections? Hearing none. The motion is approved. The Secretary General is directed to read the title of the resolution.
House Resolution 1573, a resolution urging the Board of Regents of the Cebu Normal University to establish a campus at Toledo City, Province of Cebu, to be known as the Cebu Normal University Toledo City Campus.
Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move that we adopt House Resolution Number 1573.
Any objection? The Chair hears none. House Resolution 1573 is hereby adopted.
Madam Speaker, I move that we consider House Resolution Number 1554 and direct the Secretary General to read the title of the resolution.
Any objection? Hearing none. The motion is approved. The Secretary General is directed to read the title of the House Resolution 1554.
House Resolution 1554, resolution expressing the profound condolences of the House of Representatives to the family of Jose Villareto Senior, former mayor of Bay City, Leyte, the father-in-law of Representative Oscar Esquera Jr. of the First Legislative District of the Province of Iloilo, and uncle of Representative Jose Carlos Elcari of the Fifth Legislative District of the Province of Leyte.
Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move that we adopt House Resolution Number 1554. So move, Madam Speaker, Your Honor.
Is there an objection? The Chair hears none. The motion is approved.
Madam Speaker, I move that we consider House Resolution Number 1602 and direct the Secretary General to read the title of the resolution.
Any objection? Hearing none. The motion is approved. The Secretary General is directed to read the title of the resolution.
House Resolution 1602, resolution expressing the profound condolences of the House of Representatives to the family of former passing mayor Solidad C. Yusebio, mother of Representative Richard C. Yusebio of the Long District of Passing City.
Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move that we adopt House Resolution Number 1602.
Any objection? Hearing none. House Resolution 1602 is hereby adopted.
Madam Speaker, I move that we consider House Resolution Number 1603 and direct the Secretary General to read the title of the resolution.
Any objection? Hearing none. The motion is approved. The Secretary General is directed to read the title of House Resolution 1603.
House Resolution 1603, resolution expressing the profound condolences of the House of Representatives to the family of Mrs. Henirossa Navarro Chu, mother of Representative Julia T. Uy of the Second Legislative District of Misamis Oriental.
Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move that we adopt House Resolution Number 1603.
Is there an objection? The Chair hears none. The motion is approved. House Resolution 1603 is hereby adopted. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move that we adjourn session to January 22, 2018, at 4 o'clock in the afternoon.
Session is adjourned. Till January 22 at 4 o'clock in the afternoon.